Good afternoon and welcome to the afternoon session of the Lemark's Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of May fifth, uh, May sixth, excuse me, twenty twenty five. This hearing is look being held in our hearing room at two fifty three Broadway on the second floor. It is also being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who'd like to watch. And with that, I'll turn it over to Corey Harala to take us through the afternoon items.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll start today's afternoon agenda with public hearing item number six, LPC twenty five dash zero nine five seven two, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block six seventeen, lot fifty five, twenty seventh Avenue in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a contemporary institutional building designed by Arthur A. Schiller and Albert Ledner, then built in nineteen sixty two to sixty three. The application is to install signage in the areaway.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Erin Rulie, Higgins, Quaysbarthen Partners. I'm going to, we're going to start the presentation with Jonathan Cogswell, who of Northwell, who's joining us via Zoom. I think, Jonathan, are you on?
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Excellent. Good afternoon, everyone, and thanks for taking the time this afternoon to consider our application. As Erin said, my name is Jonathan Cogswell. I'm the Vice President of Manhattan Development for Northwell, and really here to talk about our facility down in the Greenwich Village neighborhood. We've been working real hard to enhance the the clinical services that we provide to the community of Greenwich Village at our facility, which has been known to date as Lennox Health Greenwich Village. But we have recently determined that it was time to change its name to Northwell Greenwich Village Hospital to reflect the services that that we now provide at that facility. We've expanded beyond the emergency services we provided there since two thousand fourteen. Some of you may remember the landmark work that we went through with this building when we converted it from its old Saint Vincent's M O B to its current state. And we have continued to grow in that facility with the current addition of cath labs, electrophysiology labs, and an inpatient unit, which now allow the community members the opportunity to receive their inpatient care in their neighborhood versus having to to leave their neighborhood. And part of this renaming has this request inability to install some new signage in the areaway, some monument signage that is our system standard across all regions for our hospital facilities. It's it's a sign designed to really highlight the fact that this building is now a hospital through the use of a recognized colorways, and then a soft glow of light in the evenings to alert everyone to our presence, you know, in their time of need. Where we're honored to receive a unanimous vote from Community Board Two recommending the approval of this application, and I hope you will agree with the need for enhanced signage to alert the community to the presence of this key healthcare facility in their neighborhood now. Again, our thanks for your consideration of this application, and I'll I'll now turn it back to Erin to really explain the details of our request. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. So Commissioners, here we have Northwell Greenwich Village Hospital renamed earlier this year. It's located on the west side of Seventh Avenue, as you likely know, between twelfth and thirteenth streets, has three primary facades. The the building was originally constructed in nineteen sixty three as the headquarters of the National Maritime Union, so very much inspired by the the nautical theme. And so the hospital, Saint Vincent's Hospital acquired, Saint Vincent's Hospital acquired the building in the nineteen seventies, functioned there until twenty ten, when the hospital closed. At that time, the building was slated or proposed for demolition through a hardship application when Saint Vincent's was going through bankruptcy proceedings and trying to restructure itself. Luckily, Lenox Hill came in twenty fourteen, completely renovated and restored the building and adapted it for use as an ambulatory care center. Since that time, as Jonathan explained, the program has really evolved. And so now this is a full-fledged hospital, smaller in scale, but with the closing of Beth Israel, this is the only hospital aside from New York downtown to serve anything below Thirty Fourth Street. So the expanded facilities are really important. Part of what we're going to see today is the replacement of the the monument signs, which you can see right here. These were commission-approved as part of the twenty fourteen project. They are clad in stainless steel. This presents specific issues for visibility. And these are the primary wayfinding signs for for the hospital. There are two of them. And along with the program evolving over time, they've learned a lot of lessons about these signs. There are, there's low contrast between the stainless steel, the sort of mid-tone of the stainless steel finish, and the the cut-through letters. They are internally illuminated, but we'll see in the evening photos that it's they're very hard to read. And it is a hospital. People need to know where to go, and there are three primary facades. So all of the other signage on the building has already been replaced, updated, to reflect the new name. That was all done at staff level because it was a one-for-one modification, but this really needed the attention and some some level of redesign. So here are the detail, this is a detail of the existing sign. The you can see the overall footprint of the building, so really extending broadly along the side streets as well as the avenue. The signs have stainless steel finish with, these are cut through, push-through letters and internally illuminated. So this is the current wayfinding for the facilities and the emergency directional signs, and then the logo for the hospital prior to its name change. So we have a sign, two signs, one on each corner at Seventh Avenue and Twelfth Street, and Seventh Avenue and Thirteenth Street. And just to orient you, this on Twelfth Street is the ambulance entry. The emergency entry is at the center of the Seventh Avenue entrance of Seventh Avenue facade. And then the main entry for facilities above the the ER are is located at the the west end on Thirteenth Street. And you can see that the signs are sort of located in this plaza area, open plaza, that sits up on a plinth around the site and tucked in under the corner of the overhang in the existing construction. So, as Jonathan mentioned, silly was original or earlier named Lenox Hill Greenwich Village Northwell Health, and that has been changed to Northwell Greenwich Village Hospital. And there is a consistent branding throughout the the hospital system. It is, there's a specific color palette and a shape to all of the signs. They have a chamfered corner that's always oriented left in their signage. This is, it relates to their logo, the Northwell Compass, that you see in this multicolored directional logo on the top left. And the signs are a two-plane system. So the white receding plane is the hospital identity, and then the blue plane, which projects from the white facade, is all of the wayfinding. So from all Northwell facilities, they have this same system, whether it's a large-scale pylon or the the sort of more horizontally oriented monument signs. And it depends on the actual physical situation to determine which type of sign is suited for the the surrounding architecture. So here we have the overall existing condition. You can see all of the pin-mounted signage has been updated on the facade. It's been, it was really done incredibly well, and all the removals were repaired. But you can see the issue of the signage and the lack of visibility. This is an incredibly busy intersection. They, and they need to address both pedestrian and vehicular traffic as in terms of being able to give direction and identity to the facility. At night, this is the condition. So you can see, even with the backlit letters, you sort of lose all of it because of the fineness of the of the typeface. And in detail, you can see the reflectivity issues. So we get not only reflections of ambient light, but brake lights, headlights, everything happening along Seventh Avenue. So here is the overall proposed. So a new sign, we'll look at the details. But again, following the the standard Northwell signage, it is the same size as the as the existing sign, will sit on the existing stainless steel plinth, has that back plane to identify the hospital name and give visibility to the hospital. And then below that is all of the wayfinding. Again, all the departments are in blue, and emergency always in red. Detail of that. And then looking at the other corner at Thirteenth Street. So the specifics of the sign, the back plane is white painted aluminum. The top panel with the hospital name is white acrylic. This is internally illuminated with vinyl-applied signage. The projecting wayfinding signage here, the directory, is blue painted. It has push-through letters, so that's white acrylic, that will provide more contrast than the existing condition, directing you to the various departments within the building, and then, of course, to the emergency room. And it follows the the standard branded approach of all Northwell facilities with that chamfered corner. And the back has a removable plane so that the all of the the signage can be swapped out and maintain the electrical, the illumination can be repaired. So here we have, I don't know which direction I went, I'm sorry. Existing and proposed. So existing is on the left, proposed is on the right. We have, it is, the sign is about two inches taller than the existing and a slightly, a slight bit narrower, but it has to do more with the the less static organization of the of the of the sign itself. The details of that. But again, it's sitting on the same base to maintain the visibility of the sign. And then in overall context, here on Twelfth Street, and on Thirteenth Street. So you can see it still maintains the same presence that the existing signs do. I think my own personal view is that it's it has a sort of more ephemeral character to it, feels more like signage, obviously is going to be more helpful in terms of getting people where they need to do be, where, which is the critical goal here, and is sighted and maintains the existing size so that it doesn't overwhelm the corner in any way. With that, I think that's, take your questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Gold?
Just to clarify, the letters that are in the blue-red, that's a painted background with a push-through acrylic. So the the blue is not internally illuminated, but the letters in the blue are illuminated, is that right?
Exactly.
And in the white, the whole thing's illuminated on the top. It's it's not a push-through letter, it's the painted-on letter.
Exactly.
Thanks.
There is a frame around it, but it's, yeah.
All right. Other questions? We'll move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? All right, noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise-hand function. Seeing none, I'll note that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any final questions for the applicant? Okay. So I think we can just go ahead and move to our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson. Would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, the hearing is closed. And so this is a proposal to swap out two previously approved signs on the same base and in the same location and same size. The design slightly varies to have the notch in the corner. And it is in new materials and a different form of illumination to be able to better direct customers and patients to the appropriate entrance for this hospital that is luckily expanding and making use of of this building. Commissioner Latfi, would you like to, or I should say, expanding its services?
Yes, that's a good thing, for the community. You know, I do want to say the original signage was attractive, but it's clearly been ineffective. And just in terms of the needs of people coming to hospitals, whether they're patients or or visitors, I have to say, it's always a little overwhelming, no matter what the hospital is. It's hard to figure out how to make your way through into the maze, and then once you get in it, through it. So I think this this program does a very good job of meeting the needs that the applicant stated. I mean, first of all, it's it's basically using the same structure to put the, you know, for the signage. And then I think thoughtfully has illuminated it so that the most important information is seen. I think that's really important from a directional standpoint. And the illumination is not overwhelming. It fits well into the back, into the backdrop. And I think it works.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Jay.
Yes, I would agree. I think that what's being proposed, in fact, feels more like signage than what was there before, and therefore it has less relationship to the building behind it. I think it does its job without any confusion to the landmark building. I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I I think it's generally appropriate. I do think that the white on the top is a little bit much for the illuminated part. I would prefer to see that push-through letters. I think from an allegational perspective, the blue, blue signs are the more important. And if if the push-through letters are working for the lower level, I'd prefer to see that on the top. I think that the, that by day, the the sign is fine, but by night, I think.
Commissioner Jay. Yeah, I do think it is under the overhang. And I guess at night, if you're trying to get to the hospital quickly, the name is sort of the first step for me. Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chen.
Chen.
And same here.
Okay. All right. So I think we have enough to support this.
Sure. In the matter of docket, twenty five dash zero nine five seven two, Twenty Seventh Avenue, Greenwich Village Historic District, contemporary institutional building designed by Arthur A. Schiller and Albert Ledner, and built in nineteen sixty two, sixty three. The application is to install signage in the areaway. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Greenwich Village Historic District. I recommend approval finding, that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed signs will be mounted on existing bases and will only be slightly higher than the previously approved signs, that the horizontal orientation and low height of the signs will not conceal any significant architectural features, and will be harmonious with the horizontal orientation of the building, that the scale and design of the signs allow for effective directional signage, and the use of the building as a hospital with emergency services warrants the amount of proposed illuminated signage, and that the proposed signage will not detract from the special historic and architectural character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
And Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Mr. Chapin.
Aye.
Mr. Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Abstain.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Latfi.
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, and one abstention, the vote passes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number seven, LPC twenty five dash zero seven nine zero nine, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five twenty-nine, lot fifteen, eleven Bond Street in the NoHo Historic District. This is a colonial revival-style animal hospital building designed by Alicia H. Janes and August W. Cordes, and built in nineteen thirteen. The application is to install signage, mechanical equipment, and a rooftop terrace structure.
Good afternoon, Commission. I'm here with, I'm here on behalf of Studio Superet, representing the tenement at eleven Bond Street. I'm here with my colleague Alina, who's going to take you through the presentation we prepared for today.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alina Saraw from Architecture Office to Get Spread. Today, I'm going to guide you to the proposed intervention for the building at eleven Bond Street. The building is located at the corner between Lafayette Street and Bond Street, inside the NoHo Historic District. And the building is not listed as an individual landmark. You can see here some historical pictures of the building. The building was constructed in nineteen thirteen and has hosted the New York Women's Animal League until nineteen sixty-five, serving as an animal hospital until that time, and has then been converted to offices and later on to retail. The building has also undergone most recent renovation that brought back back to light some original characteristics of the building, such as the limestone storefront. In these images, you can see some of the original signage that still remains. In particular, the picture tree shows how the original metal inlay at the entrance portal of the building. And at the entrance at the same portal, the threshold holds a metal inlay of the previous tenant. Some pictures of the existing condition at the terrace level. And here you can see the existing elevation and the proposed elevation. The scope of the intervention mainly consists in introducing a new terrace structure at the terrace level, replacing the terrace paving structure with a similar new paving system, replacing the signage and introducing new signage at the storefront level, and introducing some illumination details. Going into detail, to this, here you have an axonometric view that kind of resumes the overall scope of the intervention. And going into detail, at the terrace level, we would replace the existing glass door with a new glass, folding glass door. We would replace the existing pedestal system at the floor level with a new one, and would introduce a rim that would address the difference in level that exists currently at the terrace, and and place a new aluminum structure. There is also, we would also introduce some lighting, mostly on the perimeter of the terrace, as a linear uplight, and some spotlights at the terrace. The terrace structure has been carefully dimensioned in order to be invisible from the street level, both from Lafayette Street and Bond Street. You can see in these images the mock-up of the structure to be placed at the terrace. The structure is an open structure consisting of four columns and the connecting beams. We would have no cover on the terrace. And as you can see in these images, the structure is not visible from either Bond Street and Lafayette Street at a closer level. Additional images. This, the structure does become visible at the longer, at a further away distance. We have included a diagram that shows the areas where the structure is visible. So in this slide, we have the visibility from Lafayette Street. As you can see, close up to the building, the terrace structure is not visible. The more we go, the further away we go, we start seeing the structure. But then the the tilt of the street, the curve of the street makes it invisible then after two blocks. The same situation happens on Bond Street, where the the structure becomes visible after, after a bit of a distance. But then this this street being narrower, the the structure becomes invisible at the at the first block. And here we have additional pictures that show that from the other side of the sidewalk, the roof structure is not visible. In these images, we show the mock-up terrace, the mock-up for the terrace structure, and a photo collage that would show the the structure and with the intended color placed in the context. And the same from Bond Street. Moving on to storefront signage, we propose to install, in total, three-blade, non-illuminated signs, and four pin-mounted halo-lit signs, and one window vinyl. This is a detailed elevation on Lafayette Street, where you can see the halo-lit signs, the non-illuminated blade signs. We also propose to retain the existing flagpoles and replace the flags with national flags, UK and US. And we also propose to maintain the existing brass inlay over the portal and restore it. On Bond Street, we have one non-illuminated blade sign and one halo-lit sign, similar to the situation on Lafayette Street. And in addition, we propose to replace the existing metal inlay from the previous tenant with a new metal inlay of the new tenant at the entrance portal, and replicate the same condition at the other entrance on the left side of the building. From, apart from the main signage characteristics and main signage items, we propose installing around some windows on Lafayette Street, an interior linear halo light that, and only at the third floor, we propose installing eight transparent ticker screens. In this image, you can see an overall rendering of the of the scope of the intervention. So you can see the signage at the storefront level, and the ticker screens at the third floor. An additional image that shows the building from from the angle. And this is a close-up view, just to show the intent of the halo-lit illumination around the windows. We have, we made an effort to try to mock up the transparent ticker screens to be installed at third floor. As a disclaimer, I would just want to highlight that we had some struggles with really installing the proposed elements, because the mock-ups items usually have different characteristics than the ones we intend them to have, like in the final design.
Yeah, if I can just expand on that, it's Eric from Superet as well. So that we're calling them ticker screens. They're really meant to be static portrait letters within the window. The intent, the intention is to use a full-width transparent screen. We're hoping to have upwards of seventy-five percent transparency. The challenge was really, there's no headache and equipment in the space to be able to have the content that's like one-for-one with what the tenant Yeah, proposes. And there's a, there's a large investment required to make that happen as we'd intended. So just kind of two clarifications. One, it we, it's not one-for-one, it's a concept we've tried to mock up. And the other point I think is very important is that they are meant to be static, the word mark of the tenant, and they're not meant to be active. That could be in the
In the mockups, you will see.
Yeah, just wanted to say that it isn't meant to be a ticker in that it's ever-changing, or it's only meant to be on, I believe, till ten, and it's supposed to say the branding of the tenant only.
So just to get closer to the goal of having presented the mock-ups, we had two options mocked up. The option A is our preferred specification, but we weren't sure it would be installed on time. So we also had the B option. So that's why So we also had the B option, so that's why you will see two options. But the one we propose is option A as having a better transparency in terms of model specification. We have included here, as you can see, for the option A, interior images. Again, this is just a mockup spec, so it could only host already said video. We couldn't have the static letters we intended, so that's why you see some colors. But you can see in the images that the colors of the video projected is, are kind of faint and the transparency is still maintained. Our intended design is to have the screen aligned flush with the wall and it will occupy the entire surface of the window as to not create interference with the window mountains. You can see in these images taken during daytime, the thicker screen, the screen is projecting a flower in this case. Again, it would actually project a static letter in our design intent. But as you can see, it's not very visible. The, the screen blends in with other windows quite effectively. This is the option B that we had mocked up as an alternative option, just in case. This is a different spec and it is a film that is applied to the window. And as you can see, it has less transparency than the other one, which is the reason why we suggest using the option A. But it still maintains a good degree of transparency. And in this case, we managed to kind of project a letter. But you can see it in the last image, it's, it's very faint during daytime. And here you have some more close-up, close-up images during daytime. And in this image, you have kind of comparison between the two screens. We also included some images at nighttime. In this case, it is, the option B screen is more visible than option A we suggest using. But we think in this image, you can have, you can kind of get an idea while looking at the close-up image of screen A, that imagining that that shape would be a letter. Sorry for this, asking you this effort, but imagine it would be a letter, you would still be able to see through the thicker screen and exactly the image would be a static image. And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We have questions?
Yeah, thanks. So the technology that you're using, you're proposing to use it to project a solid letter. But is there anything about the technology that would prevent the user in six weeks, six months from changing it to be something else?
The technology itself does not prevent that, of course.
Okay. And is there any reason if you wanted a letter, why didn't you just put a letter? Like just hang a metal letter with LEDs like fake neon in the window? Was there a reason why you chose to use the screen instead of an actual letter form made from signage?
Yeah, I think that the intention is that the, it's really for the visioning of the building at night. And we, we were hoping, or the tenant was hoping that there wasn't sort of a dead letter that's like counter to the brand from the inside viewed during the day. If you were to say put a neon, a traditional neon signage wouldn't be the obvious installation here within the guidelines of the mission. This was what the tenant hoped to.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Chu.
I didn't understand the response. They're saying a dead letter from the back, meaning a neon which doesn't light from two sides.
Correct.
But internally lit, any kind of letter could do that. It didn't have to be neon, right?
Sure. Our sort of interpretation here is that during the day, any signage, you know, is hard to read during the day. So the, kind of the concept is that while it's daytime, this thing could be on, but it isn't imposing from the consumer inside the store as kind of false branding. You know, the backside of their logo is never something that you want to present to the your use of the space. So effectively, we're trying to say it's transparent from the inside and not so legible rather than a fixed static signage. But then in, at night, it can give the vision that the hope is to, you know, make this building recognizable as a single tenant corner building.
Sorry, I had another question down at the street front. The main center, is that the main entry?
It is, yes.
And then there's another signage element on the left at the, at the doors, is that another entry?
Yes, it is currently.
The two entrances.
There's two entrances, yes.
And then around the corner as well?
No, those would be the two consumer entries.
I'm sorry, those are windows there.
There's an alleyway, Great Jones Alley is to the south of the building, which does have a means of egress, but no ingress.
Okay. And last question, is on the roof, you talked about there's a terrace structure?
Yes.
It's a, it's a sort of neon green, is that the intended color?
It is, yes. So to expand upon that a little bit, we have an approved application for a no effect on the interior. The tenant is seeking sort of an industrial aesthetic to their, which is much why they like this building, with a number of kind of steel upright stanchion fixturing around the perimeter, mainly on the west wall. Every, every, all the fixtures, there's a steel structure we're putting in this building for aesthetic reasons. That's all painted the same, it's their brand color. So the concept of the roof was how can we make the terrace, which has an occupancy of 19, for accessory retail feel like it's consistent with the architecture that we're, you know, in, in putting into the interior of the building.
Okay. I mean, it's got an interesting proportion. It's very tall and very narrow. What, what happens under that?
Well, it's a, it's sort of passive recreation. So 19 occupants, it could be kind of like light yoga classes. It could be something not, you know, not ticketed. But I mean, to be quite frank, this retailer is new, a little new to retail and is figuring that out. But it would be, you know, it's, we're trying to make some activation to the terrace. So we're right now trying to make it accessible and putting a ramp and a paved system. It's currently not, it has a step in it, we're trying to avoid by the new door and ramp. And then the structure sort of sets a little bit of a, I don't know, a hearth to the occupancy of the terrace, which has 19 people. I think they want to make it feel like there's some, some reason to promote, you know, outdoors wellness. Terrace, which is effectively, you know, a quarter of the.
It's symbolic then. It's kind of, it's sort of a folly on the roof that relates to the ones that inside the building.
Yeah.
But doesn't have a specific purpose.
Correct.
And is not there to create cover because it doesn't.
It is not. It's uncovered. Yeah, it's uncovered. It's only structurally designed to support itself and the imposed windows of itself. So much like, you know, pergola that, you know, is really just symbolic. I think that's the right way to say it.
Okay, thank you.
But I think Commissioner Chapin, did you have a question?
Yeah, this is actually more for you, Chair Carol Lower for the General Counsel. The fourth floor ticker screens that were described, the intended use, I find, you know, something that I feel more fairly comfortable with. But how could we ensure in any approval of it that there would not be rotating displays or, you know, not just letters and so on? Is there a way to do that? If they're using these ticker screens or would we have to mandate that they use something else?
No, I think it's a good question. I think it's hard to answer that question because we have in some cases with LED boards, people have proposed to just use static images and we've approved that. Policing it is obviously all but impossible. And, you know, we could, if they chose to move away from the letters and do something else, we'd issue a warning letter violation, they would stop and then, you know, we, might happen again. So it's, it's hard, yeah.
So in effect, if, if they use this technology, it's, it's just, it becomes an enforcement issue rather than any, anything we could say in our approval.
Right. I mean, we could still stipulate that it'd only be static letters, but then there's the enforcement issue related to that as a result of that. All right, Commissioner Jefferson.
It's my reading of the facade that the first, second floor has lettering, the fourth floor has lettering, but the third floor does not have any lettering. Is that correct?
That's incorrect. So the first floor is actually double height. So the second floor, like the second series of windows off of the storefront is all part of the first floor. There's 18-foot ceilings on the first floor. So there's two rows of fenestration that all are part of the first floor. The second band of windows, the third band of windows is actually the second floor and the brand mark lettering is part of the third floor. The fourth floor, you see there's almost like a penthouse there with the terrace onto the right. You can ever slightly see this sort of patinaled copper color rendered through the guardrail there to the right side of the image, if you could, I don't know if we can point to it. Yeah, there you go. So that is all, the terrace is an appendage to the fourth floor. So the lettering proposed is the third floor.
And the illuminated sign that you see through the windows of the second floor now in the proposal part of the double height space is set back against the far wall and that is not before us today. So just to make that clear. Okay. Any other questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony and we'll come back to you. All right, we have some people who've signed up. We'll start with Valerie De La Rosa.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Carol and Commissioners. My name is Valerie De La Rosa, Chair of Manhattan Community Board Two, and I am here to present the board's position on 11 Bond Street. The NoHo Historic District's masonry and cast iron facades were designed to rely on daylight and shadow, not an electric glow to cast the character of a building. At 11 Bond Street, a four-story 1913 colonial revival, the patterned brick terracotta bands and an ornate cornice animate the roof line. The proposed bright digital illumination completely alienates that character. The proposed rooftop structure with downlighting is plainly visible from Bond and Lafayette Streets and competes with the building's terracotta cornice and patterned brick. There is no precedent in NoHo for neon-like window outlines or video screens on an upper floor. After examining the plans, mockups, and hearing public comments, CB2 recommends the following: Denial of the rooftop structure, it is accessibly visible and visually discordant with the exceptional parapet. That although not a strictly landmarks issue, the previous BSA waiver must be evaluated in the context of the applicant's plans for the roof. Denial of the interior, of the linear interior lights surround of 32 windows as being disrespectful to the visual integrity of this architecturally important NoHo building, noting that lighting technologies evolve faster than the regulation of their appropriateness within landmark districts and that precedents with permanent effects on a district should be avoided. Denial of the eight window-sized screens, which have no precedent in the district on top floors and which, like the proposed lining of the 32 windows, have a neon-like effect. Although, we do have, we do recommend approval of the halo lit signage on the ground floor on Lafayette and on Bond, as well as approval of the proposed blade signs, vinyl signs, and replacement of the two show fields metal inlays with new stone. We also recommend approval of the installation of the RTU and VRF units. Key considerations for the commission: Visibility and precedent, LPC Rule Section 215 requires rooftop additions to not only be minimally visible, the mockups show that the structure fails that test. Nighttime character, NoHo facades traditionally recede into a quiet silhouette. LED window outlines and interior screens would create a neon effect unheard of in the district. And the regulatory gap. As you noted at the 300 Lafayette hearing last week, illuminated signage technology has outpaced LPC guidelines and CB2 urges the commission to begin updating those rules proactively. And to close, we urge you, CB2 urges you to adopt our resolution to deny the rooftop structure, deny the precedent-setting window lighting on 32 windows, and deny the eight window-sized screens. Review the BSA waiver and to approve only the modest ground floor signage with brightness controls. By doing so, you will protect the NoHo Historic District while giving the commission yourselves time to craft modern citywide standards for illuminated signage in historic districts. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and for your stewardship of New York City's landmarks.
Thank you very much. John Graham?
The Victorian. The Victorian Society supports some of the changes proposed for this colonial revival-style building. These include the installation of a terrace structures and mechanical equipment at the roof. The work is modestly scaled, it will be seen in conjunction with the red brick sidewall of the taller building to the west, and a precedent was set by the historic rooftop addition built before the 1940 tax photo was taken. We also support the installation of the metal inlay at the concrete thresholds of the Lafayette Street entrances, the non-illuminated blade signs, the vinyl signs applied to the glass, the halo lit sign secured to the string course above the ground floor windows, and the corporate symbol secured to the blind arch above the central entrance. These all seem modestly scaled and in keeping with these commercial streets. However, we couldn't find notes about attaching the signs at mortar joints and using concealed conduit to provide power to the electrified signs. These notes must be added to the final drawings. However, we recommend denial of the installation of interior window linear light surrounds at 32 window openings on the Lafayette Street facade. These linear lights on floors one through three are shown in red on drawing LM09. We also recommend denial of the installation of eight interior transparent ticker screens with individual letters spelling out the word Jimm Shark in eight windows on the third floor, shown on drawing LM37. There aren't any dimensions shown on, for these letters, but they appear to be around six feet tall. If these were once approved, we wonder if the image could be changed at will at any future time by this or any other applicant. The Victorian Society has supported the installation of many different types of signs. These include electrified signs at 19th century storefronts reflecting the design and scale of the original painted wood signs, large wall signs on the secondary facades of buildings in industrial districts, LED signs in poster boxes at churches and theaters where they didn't detract from the historic appearance of the building, and stunning illuminated signs in keeping with the historic character of a specific neighborhood such as Times Square. The proposed window light surrounds and ticker screens don't fall into any of these categories. They seem designed simply to create a spectacular effect without any attempt to harmonize with the building's colonial revival style. They are not in any way an appropriate response to this historic building or this neighborhood. They must be denied. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Clara Markowitz?
Hi, I'm Clara Markowitz, a unit owner in 7 Bond Street, which is next to 11 Bond Street. And I represent the majority of the unit owners at 7 Bond Street. And I know you also got a letter from the president of the board of 19 Bond Street because we're, we're all friends in the neighborhood. So yes, Commissioners, hello. Commissioners, hello. And I'm following very eloquent architectural wording, so I'm just going to use simple words. We are in opposition primarily to the lighting, the letters, and then the structure on the roof. We feel that the lighting is very bright, and I'm going to say loud, and is discordant and overpowers and distracts from the historic character of the neighborhood and all the other buildings around it. It also is very bright when there's residences across the street and on all sides, catty corner as well. And the roof structure is also out of character with the neighborhood, and you can see it from walking down Lafayette Street, but you can also see it at night because it will be lit and there's uplighting. We are concerned there will be larger events that can't be policed there. At the other CB two meeting, they mentioned it was going to be a focal point for events and that there would be lighting hanging from it. And finally, in two thousand seventeen, there was a BSA resolution for the owner of the building, and there was an agreement in which the owner specified that they would cover the fourth floor and close it entirely, so there would be no terrace. I've given in that resolution with the image of the building as four stories enclosed, and I think that was probably given to landmarks at that time. Thank you.
Excuse me, in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to take us through the remote participants.
Those wishing to speak via Zoom, please use the raise hand function, after which I'll promote you to panelist, and we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Deana Taskwinter.
Good afternoon, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. Deana Taskwinter, speaking on behalf of Village Preservation. Village Preservation finds several aspects of this proposal to be inappropriate. The rooftop pergola is too visible. If it is to be approved, we ask that it be set further back from the Bond Street parapet, its height lowered to the extent possible, and that the finish be of a more subdued neutral color that would better fit in with the context of the surrounding brickwork. We are also opposed to the eight illuminated letters proposed for the top floor windows. These seem unacceptable not only for their excessive illumination, but because they obstruct the window muttons, interrupting the fenestration pattern and details of this prominent facade. Regarding the lower storefront signage, we are particularly concerned about the pin-mounted logo at the blind arch above the main Lafayette Street entrance. We believe that a sign in this somewhat atypical location should not be illuminated and perhaps should not be permitted at all. There's plenty of other signage included in this proposed scope. Finally, though we understand that LPC does not regulate light, we feel compelled to point out just how jarring the LED lighting surrounding all of the upper floor windows will be for this building and this historic district. Cumulatively, we find the lighting and the signage for this proposal to be excessive. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Haley Johnson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Haley Johnson. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HTC finds the proposed volume of neon signage on this building to be inappropriate. Page ten of the application shows signage in almost every window of the Lafayette Street facade in addition to blade signage, halo lit signage, and threshold signage. Turning this handsome facade into a billboard is inappropriate. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker will be Carter Booth.
Good afternoon. My name is Carter Booth. I'm here testifying as an impacted resident living directly across the street from this application or from this applicant at twenty Bond Street. I'm also a member of CB two and testified at the CB two's landmark committee meeting and voted in support of CB two's resolution recommending denial of most of the proposal that is before you. As a past chair of CB two, I'm happy that the CB two's position has been articulated clearly here by Valerie De La Rosa, Chair of CB two, and her presence is noted by the commission as to the impact of what is before you. In two thousand sixteen, LPC doc at seventeen seven seven four six at this location, the commission approved a significant number of changes presented as part of the conversion of this building from a commercial building previously operated as an animal hospital and then as a women's shelter for several decades to support a new retail use, including many changes at the ground floor level to support that retail use, including enlarging the masonry openings for new showroom windows, the addition of retail signage, raising the floor to accommodate a ground floor showroom, and approval of an addition at the rooftop to extend existing rooftop penthouse to cover the full length of the rooftop. At the time, the conversion was also subject to BSA variance, which required the extension of the rooftop addition to the full penthouse level and prohibited outdoor rooftop use. In two thousand nineteen, LPC doc at nineteen three four four one zero, the commission again was presented changes at this building, including the rooftop addition, which was approved with a further setback along with proposed pin-mounted signage on the Lafayette Street facade, which would recall the original institutional signage shown in historic photos. And that proposed work is supportive of the continued adaptive reuse of the building and will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo Historic District. As a condition of that approval, the commission required that the pin-mounted signage not be illuminated and the details for the signage panel above the main entrance be refined in consultation with staff. You've heard a lot of testimony today. You know, this clearly goes what's beyond what's reasonably necessary to continue the adaptive reuse of this building for retail use and grossly infringes upon the historic character of the NoHo Historic District and creates a significant distraction from the historic buildings besides individual landmarks that are in that immediate proximity. A couple of other things, just quickly that haven't been touched on, the the rooftop aluminum structure, which is presented here, is actually very visible from Bond Street and Lafayette Street. And you can see that on slides LM eighteen and LM nineteen. And the cornice here is not solid. There's some sort of a lattice work. I'm not sure what the technical language is for that. But through that, you can clearly see the structure and as was pointed out by Ms. Markowitz, the applicant had said that they intend to use that structure.
I'm so sorry. Could you please summarize the remainder of your testimony? You're at your three-minute limit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll note for the record that Lower East Side Preservation Initiative recommends mixed approval, objecting to the linear interior light surrounds of thirty-two windows and the eight window-sized screens.
Thank you. All right, would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
Yeah, absolutely. It's Eric Barasso, Studio Suparet principal. I think first I'd like to largely clarify the nature of this building. This building was largely rebuilt, reframed, and restructured. I personally believe, to my best belief, knowledge, and judgment, that really the the closer, really the historic fabric of this building that exists today is the brickwork. The windows are are undivided lights. They're double-hung, undivided lights that have absolutely zero historical context. I don't believe that they fall to the original tax photos. I believe that they're modern windows. In fact, I wish they were nicer. I think that's one distinct clarification, that we are not impregnating this new, modern lighting in a way to try to further play up the renovations of this building. I think that we're trying to make something that sort of, I don't know, blends the interior use of the space. I would I would look at this space. I think a lot of the challenge to the proposal here is for the use of the building and less so for the proposal in proposed today as part of the in the landmarks jurisdiction. I'm it's unfortunate that people don't like the zoning of the the retail of this building, but unfortunately, we're not here to testify against that. The building is going to have a lot of lighting. It's going to comply with the energy code, but I strongly believe that the window signage and the window lighting is not what you're going to see. You're it's a transparent building. It has a lot of fenestration, and I really don't believe that putting what we've tried to do is regress the halo light so that you're not seeing the lensed illumination and it's more of a glow. We feel like that's more consistent with kind of like the the angled view. But I really don't feel like that's not in keeping with a very modern, undivided, double-hung window that, you know, was probably built in the constructed in the two thousands. So I'd like to call attention to that. I'd also like to mention that the roof terrace structure was positioned as far west as we could possibly put it. There are examples of that up and down Lafayette Street, even just across the street. There's a pergola that is also visible. We haven't done studies of that. But it's not, I don't think this is a one-off to the activations of the other roofs on Lafayette Street that have an occupancy. So I'd like to appreciate that. And then I also, you could sort of see here the the structure that we're putting into this building with this sort of patinaed copper branding color there on the steel that's inside of the building. That's kind of does, I don't know, I guess, appropriate that to the context of the tenancy in the building. So it isn't just a one-off thing that we decided as a color out of our hand, you know, it's really something that's trying to make a single tenant retailer feel like, yes, there is something on the roof. It's a public space, so everyone, you know, the public can go out there. I think it's an asset to the neighborhood, and I think it should be at least considered as such. And then the last piece that was mentioned of opposition to would be the the digital screen, static lettering that we're calling. I think that was our play of trying to not make this look like neon signage that is creating shadows and you know, creating a new language over the the faux muttons. We thought that that was a way to be a little bit more subtle. The lights will be on, so it I think it's just important that we consider the building as a whole and not just these three parts in a vacant building.
Thank you. Commissioners, yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
For the window surrounds, the rooftop, you gave light levels, which is great. For the window surrounds, I don't think you gave any sort of what the foot candles would be at those window surrounds. Do you have that information?
We do. It wasn't part of our our presentation. They could be dimmable.
Yeah.
We we could provide that as a follow-up, as a condition of the approval. We could keep it under, say, five-foot candle.
Let me cut you off there because I do have an answer on this that I think I'll give. So the commission, as you may know from other projects, has historically not regulated the wattage or light or the amount of light. We look at the fixtures, and so in this case, the fixtures are concealed on the inside and therefore eligible for a staff level review. So that's why there isn't as much information about that here today. If this were a linear light that was visible that enframed the window or was around the perimeter of the window, then we would be looking at it.
So you're saying the window, the window surrounds are not really
They're not before us today.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'd just also like to clarify, the whole building was insulated in the, I think it was the two thousand nineteen application, and the whole interior of the building was insulated along with this insulated glass. So in no way are we deteriorating any interior fabric that's visible through the window. It's all been, it's all modern old form structure inside that we would be regressing those lights into.
Thank you.
Any other final questions? All right, then let's begin our discussion. Commissioner Latfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. And Commissioner Chin, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so we are looking at signage on this building, and we're looking at the rooftop mechanical and pergola on the building. For the signage, we have the halo lit signs, blade signs, and vinyl signs at the ground floor. At the top floor, there are the ticker letters. The other signage, as I said earlier, is on in the inside, on the far inside wall and not part of this application. And and then we are looking at the rooftop mechanical equipment and pergola, both of which are seen, I think, in most views against the backdrop of the the building beyond. And I think that we have approved minimally visible or partially visible pergolas, but I think we have carefully considered the size, the height, the the dimension, thickness of it, and finish and materiality. So I think we'll have a discussion about all of that. Commissioner Goldblum, would you like to start?
Sure, thanks. Okay, so I think that the rooftop pergola and AC are appropriate. I think that the you know, the pergola, which is the more controversial of the two elements, is seen against the backdrop of a large building. It has a perhaps a tad dynamic color, but I personally don't find that to detract from the building itself. I think that the signage in the street, the bed of the sidewalk is appropriate. I think that the blade signs and the halo lit letters are appropriately scaled and are placed in a reasonable way. I think that the lettering on the top floor, however, is very problematic. I I think it's problematic because even though the applicant wishes to have this to be a particular graphic with a particular brightness and a particular style, the technology of the fixture that we would be approving would not limit them to such limitations. You know, they could, it reminds me of that project in the Turtle Building on Union Square where they had like movies of fish going through the windows because it was going to be a pet store. That could be the same with this, I think. I think the techno technology is the same. So I don't I don't think that's the right technology for this location, and since we can't control content and all we can control is fixtures, you know, it's like like putting a loaded gun in in the hands and we just, yeah, we're just going to use it to crack nuts open. That's not, we can't do that, I don't think. So I don't think, and also I think from the district's perspective, signage per se in those letters, I think, is problematic. I think that while this is a commercially zoned building and a commercial use is, I think, appropriate, not that we have any say over that, I think that the placement of signage in the top floor windows in this particular area of this district doesn't strike me as consonant with the way the district is is used or was historically used. So I don't think that any signage per se in those top windows would be appropriate. I think that the halo lighting of the lower windows, which Sarah noted is going to be done at a staff level, all I would say is that they are a big deal if they are visible. And I would just ask the staff to verify that that they are not visible from any angle because if they do become a halo, you know, like a real glow, like a like a visible fixture, I think that would be quite disturbing. That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So I agree with Commissioner Goldblum, except for possibly the letters on the fourth floor. And I think, as somebody said, the technology has gotten ahead of what we can do because if somebody wanted to present video screens, we'd say you need to not block fifty percent or whatever it is of each window if we allow letters up there. Here, they're using something that's clear, so from the inside, you really aren't going to see it. And from the outside, you're going to see in except for where the letters are. So conceptually, it's going to be fairly visit, open and visible. conceptually, it's going to be fairly visit open and visible. At the same time, the problem is we can't really control content. And if it were just the letters, I think it's relatively benign. But they could have people doing gym exercises, moving around or so on, which would be appropriate for what they're selling, but would be very different blocking most of the windows. So I'm torn and not sure exactly what the right solution is here. And it may be that we say no to the signage, but I think we've got to think through, is there a way we can reasonably regulate signs that are largely clear and to some degree regulate content with the issue as counsel pointed out, it's very hard to enforce that.
Yeah, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I think that's the issue. I think that, you know, as to the rooftop, I I think I agree with the commissioners. There are no issues up there. This is consistent. What we normally agree, given the context, approve. And I think the what we do with the upper floor, that top floor lettering is like to hear what the rest of the commission have to say.
Vice Chair Bland.
I'm okay, except the lowest level, signage at the lowest level. Okay, and except the issues all on the roof, including the new pergola. Visibility is, again, the fact that it's visible is not a, is not the issue. It's it's what you see and does it interfere with the appreciation of the rest of the building? And in this case, it does not for me anyway. But I also take exception to the so called ticker letters, whatever they are. I'm not really completely sure what they are on that top floor floor, and I'm simply against that. I sort of regret sometimes that we can't control the nature of light, but but I know we can't because it can so fundamentally change the appreciation of a building. It seems odd that we we don't control that in any way, but I can understand some of the reasons why we can't. But in this case, if all those windows are all surrounded by the effect of a kind of a neon like light, it's going to completely turn the building into a billboard, which one of the one of the testimonies suggested, and that was my term too. I think it's wrong when when a facade becomes a billboard, except maybe Times Square.
And, you know, I think we have historically said no to neon tubes around the perimeter of a window. So you know, maybe the staff can see a mockup of it to ensure that it reads as a glow and not a line. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I share the view of many of the commissioners here. First, on the pergola and the rooftop mechanicals, I think those are fine. I don't think they're really an issue. It is, it does include some down lighting, doesn't it? That was in testimony and I, but it's not included here, so.
Again, if the fixtures aren't visible, it's something that could be done at staff level. We'll take a look at it, though, make sure that it meets the rules.
It's not, you know, unreasonable. In any event, I also can approve the street level of signage, including the halo lighting and the blade signs. I had equally a concern about the thirty two lighted windows and I understand that we don't regulate those unless they're the lighting is visible, the fixtures are visible in some fashion. And I also, I cannot approve the ticker sign because of the potential for it to be animated or to be totally different than what we're approving. Something that was similar to what we were approved, we were presented with as far as signage on that floor. I could probably approve something that would, you know, that's what's currently presented in a, you know, just white, you know, light, not moving would be possible, but I wouldn't want to approve something that could be, you know, so distracting potentially.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lutfee.
I think a lot of my my fellow commissioners have made a lot of good comments. I'm going to just align myself on many of the comments that Michael Goldberg made. I did just want to step back for a minute and say, this is a retail store. It might say gym shark, but it's, I just want to say it's not a gym. So the most important place for me, based on the fact that it's retail, for signage to be is at a level where it hits the street. Because that's where consumers purchase, potential purchasers come in contact with signage. And I think what happened here is that the applicant kind of flip flopped their emphasis. The signage at the bottom is I'm going to say understated. And, you know, we could say it's well done, but it's very understated so that when you are, you know, there's a couple of signs, so you do get, and the windows, the retail windows are large. But I feel like the emphasis should be on the lower part of the building. And we have you know, been fairly flexible in what happens in those windows. Sometimes I think a little too flexible. And I I think this is for me, not only a problem in terms of how retail signage is being approached here, but I think as Michael said, in this particular district and as other people who have spoken have said, I am having a very big problem with it. This is a quiet district. And in so many ways, and the architecture here is important and the feeling that you get, there's a lot of retail here. And the way it's handled is kind of, in my mind, can sort of in keeping with what the buildings are. And in fact, I see them as I see it as a lovely enhancement to the buildings. And I think that's that's not what's going on here. So actually, I'm I'm even changing my mind a little more as I speak about my opinion. So I think it needs to be rethought a little bit. And that includes what's going on at the top of the building because I don't have any, I'm not even there doesn't even seem to be a reason for that pergola to be up there. So why would I be approving something that has visibility and convincing myself that it blends into the streetscape if, you know, maybe there's going to be an occasional yoga class there? So so I now think I would like to recommend that this applicant goes back and rethinks what they're doing. So and of course, I completely disagree with the you know, the lights in the windows as a result of, you know, my perspective on this.
Okay, Commissioner Chu.
So just to speak to all the several items here, I think that I think that most of the proposals here is is appropriate. I think the biggest issue I have with others is is the signage up on the fourth floor. And I think Jeannie's comments were right on. If you look at the historic building too, the the ground floor offers more openness, more glazing and opportunity. I feel that the the historic building and the design of the top floors actually, we can't see it so well in this rendering, but there's a lot of articulation up there. And I almost feel like putting the letters just messes it up, gets too busy. Whereas below, there's a lot of space and it's much more visible. So I would agree with my fellow commissioners, the fourth floor signage lettering is is really not appropriate here. The other elements I can I can accept. The pergola, it is bright, it does have a relationship to the inside. With that, it gave me some sense of meaning there. And because it is relatively minimal, I'm I'm okay with that as a mass. It's no taller than the than the than the the fourth floor or the I guess the top floor that's on half of the building. So it is setback.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I can accept the the lettering and lighting on the ground floor. And accept the blade lighting. And accept the the pergola. But you can barely see it. I do agree with my fellow commissioners that the fourth floor is a little bit excessive. The lighting, the amount of lighting is too much for me.
Okay. All right. So I think that we have enough to do an approval in part of all aspects except for the ticker lights in the fourth floor, both based on their type, but also the location on this particular building. Okay.
Regarding eleven Bond Street in the NoHo historic district, the application is to install signage, mechanical equipment and rooftop terrace structure. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo historic district. I recommend approval with modifications. Finding that the proposed work will not damage or obscure any significant architectural features that, given the building's long Lafayette Street frontage, the cumulative effect of the proposed varied signage, including halo lit pin mounted letters and logos, bracket signs and applied vinyl signage and bronze inlay letters at the entry ways will not overwhelm the building, that the presence of individual letters never mind, that the proposed unenclosed terrace structure featuring thin metal framing with dark green finish will maintain an open character against the background of taller building, of a taller building, and will be seen only from the select views at a distance. And that the proposed work is supportive of the continued adaptive reuse of the building will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo historic district. However, I recommend I find that the lighting on the fourth floor, the mesh type lighting on the fourth floor is inappropriate and that the applicant should not install the those letters on the fourth floor. Those signage type on the fourth floor.
All right, great. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Mr. Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfee. With eight in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
All right. So that's approved except for the ticker signs and you can continue to work with Anu and the staff. Move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number eight. LPC twenty five dot zero two nine one two, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Block eight forty nine, lot sixty eight, nine thirteen Broadway in the Ladies Mile Historic District. This is an altered neo-greg style commercial building designed by Charles Rock, built in eighteen seventy four. The application is to construct a rooftop addition.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Sarah Carpenter and I'm the architect representing the client for this project. So this is a photo of the existing conditions of the facade. We're proposing a rooftop expansion in the area outlined below. Also to note, this client recently at staff level installed a new facade for ADA compliance. So this is the street view of the proposal here. Here you see the area of visibility at the corner of twentieth and Broadway. This is at the far corner of twentieth and Broadway. I actually think I missed a sheet. Sorry, for the historical vote. One thing to note is that this is was historically a five story building, which in the nineteen thirties was renovated with the top three floors removed. So historically, this is a building that has gone through a significant change. Here you'll see another view of the views from street level here at the corner. I should note that this is not visible from across the street. And in part, this is due to the lower height of the surrounding buildings. Here is a rooftop mockup of the proposed extension. We're proposing a white stucco in alignment with the facade below. And also proposing a new bronze standing seam rooftop. The idea that it blends historically with the existing and surrounding brick. Also to note is that because of the nature of the change of this building, there are two layers of roofing material. One above the structure, we're proposing that the top layer be removed in order to lower the height of this extension to be less visible. This also allows for us to use the existing parapets for a railing, so we don't need any secondary railing extensions. So again, this is a proposal on elevation. I'm showing the continuity between below. This elevation, this is existing, showing the existing doneage with mechanical that was approved at staff level with the previous application. The existing stair bulkhead and existing elevator bulkhead, elevator bulkhead was also approved at staff level. These three elements will be encompassed within the new proposal with the mechanical doneage behind the less visible. Elevation showing the proposed parapet. This line here is the line of the proposed roof, so we're lowering this by seventeen inches in order to use a parapet as a railing. And nothing in this portion will be visible above the parapet. Again, this is existing versus proposed. We're proposing the pitch of this roof in order to avoid a railing at the front, which we feel is more discreet and more continuous with views at street level. Proposed elevations showing the pitch of this. The lower section is kept at this height and continuous for FDNY access. These are section cuts. This is non-visible section cut. This is visible through the proposed skylight. This is a floor plan showing the setback. Existing showing this doneage, extensive doneage and bulkheads, which will be encapsulated within a proposed structure. Also adding views of the rear facade. It's due to the portions of the space, it's difficult to capture in one photo, but this is an assemblage. This is showing that existing doneage with the egress stair on the rear. This is the view which shows the rear parapet here, which then connects to the exterior egress. And then this is a final slide showing the visitor from the street.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
So Corey, you sent us an image that maybe we can put on the screen because I think it's taken closer to the building at this angle and the addition is much more visible.
Yes, thank you. I I did share an image with all of the commissioners and noted that the staff had gone out to site this morning to look at the mockup and and noticed that there was more visibility than was presented in the presentation. So anyone that hasn't gotten a chance to check their email could take a look at it then. I'll speak with Abby to see if it's something we might be able to put on the screen, but otherwise I could say it is this vantage point basically with a step over, it's sort of towards the right and maybe with the camera a little bit higher because we use it, you know, a six foot zero eye level for our mark. And so you do see more of the addition than what's suggested in this rendering.
Any other questions? All right. So while we're all looking at that, why don't we move to public testimony? I don't have any sign in sheets. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? All right, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us, I assume, who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Committee Board Five Seeing none, I'll note for the record that Manhattan Committee Board Five recommends approval.
Okay. All right, so the testimony is supportive. Is there anything you'd like to say before we move to our discussion?
No, I think the most important factor is that this five-story building cut down, so again, historically has been through a lot of change. Myself and the client is trying to be the least intrusive visibly as possible while still maintaining a program that works for their business structure, which is an extension of the restaurant below.
Okay, and it's to be outdoor seating in the front portion?
Correct, that was to pull the facade back as much as possible.
Okay, all right, because I did wonder if you'd contemplated just bringing the facade up since it's been so altered. But it's not about the space, it's about the outdoor use as well, I understand. Okay. All right, commissioners, I think if there are no other questions, we'll move to our discussion on this one. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Still moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, so we'll begin our discussion. So this is a building that was once five stories, and it was cut down in the 1930s. At some point, its facade was further altered and doesn't retain any of its historic appearance now. There may be some fabric, I'm not sure, but it doesn't recall its historic appearance, and so the proposal is this setback rooftop addition for the restaurant space that is sloped to, I think, prevent some visibility and also to prevent the need to do a railing on the roof. And it's seen from this one vantage point that's shown on the map, a little again to the right and maybe at eye, six-foot eye level, which is our mark. You'd see more of it, which is in the photograph that was submitted to you. So we'll begin our discussion on it. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this?
Yeah. So excuse me, it's sort of a little neither fish nor fowl in that either if the addition was pulled back a bit, it wouldn't be, it'd be less visible. Or if the addition was designed not to recreate, but in some way relate to what was there before. It could be a modern interpretation or... And so, in general, I think this is getting close to approvable, but I would either look at pulling the addition back a bit or trying to do something that has some relationship to what was there before. And that could probably be done at staff level and...
Well, if they raise the street wall, that would come back to us, but we could ask them to work with the staff to reduce visibility by pushing it back more, maybe looking at the height of it.
So we can give them a choice there.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, so either the applicant can lower the floor even further, I don't know if they can do that, they lower by 17 inches so far. And I wonder what they did there, but, or the slope. But I'm just thinking along the context that originally this had additional three stories, right? I mean, this building used to be five stories. And so it is that issue, I guess, you know, if they can minimize it, that would be helpful.
Vice Chair Bland?
I don't quite understand why everybody wants to lower it. I actually want increase it and see it more. I think it's perfectly wonderful the way it is.
Commissioner Chapin?
I think, I think having this sort of thing on top of the building at this location is appropriate. It's between these two very large buildings, and the building was formerly five stories, so I think perhaps the staff could work with them on trying to have the appearance be a little more in keeping with the architecture of the building and the surrounds, but I think that the bulk visibility is acceptable because it's only from this one orientation, and it's as I've said about the context.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
It's such a an unfortunate situation, this little building that was chopped up. But I do, I am completely sympathetic with what the applicant is trying to accomplish here, and is trying to do it in a way that is not very intrusive. Or it's going to be visible no matter what. So I would, as other, some other commissioners have said, encourage the applicant to work with staff to maybe minimize the visibility a little bit, maybe it should be set back. Maybe the use of materials, the kinds of materials they're using should be looked at as well. But with that, I could approve this.
Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I think that adding mass to this building is not an issue for me at all. Everything around it is much bigger. It used to be many floors taller. I think, at least for me, part of what feels uncomfortable is just the fact that the rooftop addition is not parallel to the facade, so it looks, it looks wonky in every view, and we're trying to figure out why is that, and it's just because it's not parallel. So we're getting a very strange oblique view of it from here. I think it's pretty minimal in terms of an addition. I don't think it'll be noticed much. I agree with Fred, I wouldn't have minded if we noticed it more, and it was more expressive. But, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, I think Stephen hit the nail on the head. I think if, the simplest way to make this look less like, less odd and more normative is to make the facade of it parallel with the facade of the building, which it is not now. That's kind of what gives it this kind of semi-collapsing look. And it just has to do with the geometry. It just doesn't work with the building. And you could do that by extending it forward, or by pulling it back, or by some combination of the two. But I think Mark's idea of extending the facade up is, is the best of the bunch, and it reminds you of the Duane Park Building, which was done, you know, many years ago, where they took, kept the cast iron facade and set the building back. It's a magical building, and it's a great precedent for, for this location. We've seen a few projects where people want to take these decapitated buildings and imagine how to extend them vertically, and I think that those are always rare and potentially fascinating opportunities for people, and I think it's, it'd be great for them to imagine how that extension up could frame even a oddly-shaped rooftop addition and kind of make for an interesting interplay between facade and building.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. All right, so, but I think what we have is enough to support it today, working with the staff to study, or sort of re-study the geometry a bit so that it helps blend away. But if they did want to come back with some version that raises a street wall, that's something we'd certainly entertain as well. But we can go ahead with an approval with modifications today.
Good, turn it on. With regards to LPC 25-02912, 913 Broadway, Ladies Mile Historic District, an altered neo-Greek-style commercial building designed by Charles Wright and built in 1874, application is to construct a rooftop addition. I note that the building's scale, style, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Ladies Mile Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed rooftop addition will be set back from the front facade and will not be visible over the front facade from directly across the street, that the addition will feature simple design, typical stucco cladding, metal roofing, in keeping with utilitarian rooftop structures found throughout the historic district. And the construction of the addition on the rear parapet of this building, which previously had its upper floors removed, will not obscure any extent visual clues to the building's historic massing, alter its typology, or detract from the simple design secondary facade of the surrounding larger buildings. However, I find that the orientation of the addition and its sloped roof set at a different angle than at the front facade of the building will draw undue attention to the addition within the view of the streetscape. Therefore, working with staff, the form and finishes of the addition will be restudied to minimize its visual impact on the building and its neighbors and better blend with the context in the roofscape.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
We'll move to the next item, public hearing item number nine. LPC 25-08773, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 994, lot 7502. 1466 Broadway, the Nickherbacher Hotel Individual Landmark. This is a Bozart-style hotel building designed by Marvin and Davis with Bruce Price, built in 1906, and altered by Charles A. Platt in 1920 to 21, with a Romanesque Revival-style annex designed by Philip C. Brown and built in 1894. Application is to replace terracotta with a substitute material.
Okay. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Russ Newbold, I'm a partner at Service Design Group, and we are here to present a material substitution for replacement of terracotta at the Nickherbacher Hotel. We've been involved with the Nickherbacher for the last 12 years in maintaining the facade, and have a very in-depth knowledge of the facade and its systems. And my associate partner here, Alana, will present the criteria by which we feel this is appropriate for your consideration. Thank you.
Hi, Russ. Thank you, everyone. We are looking to replace terracotta on the building with cast stone primarily at the building corners. This building falls under Local Law 11, so we are currently doing fist repairs on the building. We do have a staff-level approval for replacement and alternate materials at discrete elements on the building, however, during the course of our inspection, as the building has been fully piped, there have been facade conditions at the building corners that were observed that has warranted a request for replacement. Here is the 1940s tax photo of the building, as well as the designation report. This next slide here in red, elements on the corner show the locations where we are looking to replace terracotta with alternate materials, primarily at the upper floors, however, there is some isolated replacement on the lower floors at the corners as well. The same view that was on elevation view on the prior slide is also shown on elevation photo markup, so you can see the extent of the replacement at the building corners. We are looking to replace with cast stone as a substitute replacement for terracotta primarily because of the location. The location on the corners, the areas where we are looking are primarily flat ashlar units in line with the plane of the masonry. You can see the photos off to the side. Our samples we do have of replacement with cast stone from Vestacast. We are looking for replacement with cast stone as a durable substitute material. It is a long-lasting material. It has been tried and tested. Vestacast is part of certified fabricator. They do use high-quality pigments and cement to prevent weathering. The reinforcement within the units, the stainless steel reinforcement also allow for it to be a long-lasting material and very durable for the use of replacement at the building corners. Throughout this presentation, at the very end, there is a precedent for replacement on this building. There has been alternate materials utilized here before. One other item I do want to mention is the specifications. When we did look into replacement material, we were looking for a material that was self-supporting and load-bearing, as well as able to be installed properly from the exterior for the use that we're looking for. And these cast stone, we feel, is a good substitution. I do want to go into a couple of photos of the existing conditions on the building. This is the northwest corner of the building. As you can see, the terracotta has had prior repair in the past to address local law 11 facade conditions. This has primarily been crack repair and patch repair over the last 30 or 40 years, most likely, however, each unit has had multiple repairs conducted. We do see these repairs separating and in failure, and we also are cognizant of the fact that the prior patching material and color is not holding up. There is separation, and some of the patches are not done as neatly as we would like, so again, another concern and requirement for replacement here. These photos as well show, again, conditions at other floors on the building. You can see the long history of prior patch repair on the building. What we did try to do on this presentation is to differentiate the different types of units, because we did do a quantity breakdown of replacement units and types. So you can see type A, type 2B as flat ashlar units, type 3B as a recessed unit on the corner. And this differentiation in quantity comes into our main rationale for replacement with cast stone, which is the installation procedure to install replacement units on this building. A few other condition photos of the existing conditions and differing types at the building corners. Here is the table version of the different types and quantities and sizing where we're looking for replacement. It is approximately 206 units on the building at the building corners, including the northwest corner, the northeast corner, and the southeast corner as well. So when we were looking at the replacement units to address these local law 11 facade conditions, to make this building safe in order to get the sidewalk shed down at this location, we did do some probes at the corner to determine the existing installation of the terracotta. As you can see, the terracotta web has been filled with masonry. It is a solid mass masonry wall with steel structure. When we were looking at replacement terracotta, we were very concerned with the installation of replacement units, as well as the placement of anchors for replacement units at the terracotta in order to, A, continue to keep this corner a mass masonry structure, as well as to make sure that we were installing anchors properly to be able to be verified for DOB inspection requirements, which led us to wanting to utilize cast stone. We feel like we can get stainless steel anchors fabricated as part of the process. We feel like these anchors can be installed easily into the backup structure as well, and the fact that the cast stone is solid will allow the corner to act as it originally has as a solid mass masonry, more genius corner. These last two slides here do show some history of replacement units on the building over time. We're not exactly sure when fiberglass was installed in the building, maybe in the 90s, but every water table on the upper floors is replaced with fiberglass. Ballast rates have been replaced with cast stone and GFRC, and some isolated ashlar units have been replaced with cast stone. Here are samples from the staff-level approvals for mortar and alternate replacement with cast stone and GFRC as well. That does conclude the presentation. Thank you.
Do you have an image that shows like the whole elevation with the parts that are proposed to replace today? Sorry, I must have missed it at the beginning.
This is the elevation view of the location.
That's the proposal for today?
Yes.
And if you were to look at this facade and add in there a different color for all the stuff that's been replaced already with alternate materials, would it be about double that amount, five times that amount? You know, what's, how much of the original non-brick is left on this building?
So the balcony net and lintels at every window head is primarily the historic terracotta. The water tables at the, above the ninth floor and at the 12th floor have been primarily replaced in fiberglass.
Those big, long cornices are fiberglass?
Long horizontal runs, yep. All fiberglass, and there has been isolated replacement of discrete elements as well.
Precast or fiberglass?
Yeah, precast fiberglass, and there is some GFRC on this building a little bit.
Just to address, and I'm sure you have answers to this, but just, it's really a material choice that we're looking at, your proposal for cast stone. So can you just tell us how it's appropriate in terms of the difference in the weight? Because it's going to be more, it's going to be heavier in the structure. Appearance, it looks like you've been able to match quite accurately what's there. But the weathering will be different on two materials too. So if you could just talk about the weight and the difference of weathering of the different materials.
Right, so we did consider the weight when we were thinking about replacement in cast stone as well as alternate materials, which is partially why we shied away from GFRC. What led us to cast stone is the fact that the cells of the existing terracotta are already infilled with masonry and are already very solid as well, and we felt like it would be a very similar weight. We also were cognizant of the fact that when we do install stainless steel anchors to anchor these terracotta units, they'll be more so self-supporting instead of load-bearing on the terracotta below. In terms of your question on weathering, we are looking very closely at the fabricator that we're using, which is Vestacast. We know that they are a certified member of the Cast Stone Institute, and we are looking for use of the high-quality materials, pigments, and fabrication process that we feel will allow us to obtain high-quality cast stone replacement units that will help prevent any sort of improper weathering as well as utilizing a contractor to install these units properly with proper pointing and sealing to prevent any additional water infiltration that has led to this original condition that we're trying to address now.
Does the existing terracotta have a sheen to it? It looks very matte from every picture you've taken.
Yeah, it is very matte.
It's very matte, so it won't have that reflective quality that we would notice. Okay, thank you.
Just to add, it's what we call a slip glaze, which means it's very matte, it's meant to mimic limestone. And that's also a big consideration. If this were a vitreous glazed terracotta we were replacing, we definitely would not be here today. We'd be replacing it with terracotta.
Have the, have the finishes of the earlier installed alternate materials weather differently? Or, I mean, I didn't notice from the photos, but can you notice, have you noticed that?
So we did note one or two units that have been replaced with GFRC. Not so much weathering differently, but failing and cracking. You can see, I believe this is one of the replacement GFRC units. And just because of the fact it was not able to support the units above led to some additional cracking. The fiberglass, we did not note any deterioration or weathering to the units. I think some of the GFRC at the ballast rates are also holding up very well, and those have been installed for roughly twenty years at this point, we estimate.
Yeah, Commissioner Lutti.
Could you go back to, I don't know, page, where you're looking at the facades and you showed us the locations of requested replacement?
The elevation view or?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, 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 the photo.
Okay.
So I just wanted to know, like, in the areas that are closer to the street, like let's say on the far right of the north elevation and the left of the west elevation, what's, what is the material that's adjacent to it? Is that terracotta or is, have those been replaced? I'm just thinking because they're more.
Talking about the red brick?
Yeah. Well, it's not, is that brick?
The red that you see?
Yeah, that's brick.
Part of the facade is red brick.
Okay, so I misunderstood that. No, 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 not that. No, the highlighted.
Oh, yes, this is all terracotta.
That's, but, and then next to that is terracotta.
It, directly below is a limestone.
No, above it.
Above here, right here?
Yeah, right there.
Also terracotta.
Also terracotta. Yeah, right.
The corners are all.
They're all terracotta. And the same on the west elevation. What is, isn't, which you're not going to replace, is also terracotta.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, are there questions? All right, we'll take testimony. Okay. Sorry, excuse me, I had to step out for a minute. Would anyone like to speak on this application? John Graham, please come up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The Victorian Society is happy to support this proposal to replace specific unsound terracotta units on these facades with a substitute material. This excellent presentation lays out the existing conditions and the benefits of using this specific material in a clear and informative manner. The visual match for existing terracotta seems excellent based on the photographs. We do remain concerned about differences in appearance after weathering and about differences in appearance when the facade is wet. It's also unclear to us how the proposed work will resolve the underlying problems described in the conditions assessment on the first slide. How will the work minimize continued deterioration of the remaining historic terracotta? Despite these misgivings and our usual preference for in-kind replacement, we recommend approval and hope the Commission will keep this material on hand to show other applicants. Thank you, Commissioners.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? All right, noting that there isn't, we'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Kaylee Johnson, I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we request for you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HTC appreciates that cast stone manufacturers are continually improving their product. And what is proposed here is a much better match for terracotta than what was previously available. However, we remain concerned about how the cast stone will look as it ages. We suspect that over time, its weathering will differentiate it from terracotta and therefore find terracotta to be the most appropriate material for this project. Thank you.
Anyone else joining us, I assume, who would wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval.
Thank you. We've had some support for the project. There were some questions. You might want to address those. And then anything else you'd like to add at this time would be fine.
Just to the point of longevity of the material and also durability of the product as well. When we do look at exterior facade maintenance in local law eleven, we always recognize the fact that maintenance of a building facade does help prevent deterioration of elements. So we are, you know, looking at the campaign of repointing and sealing and preventing moisture infiltration to, A, halt the issues that we've seen previously, but also to address the facade conditions that are currently present. And at some locations, that does include, you know, treatment of the underlying steel and unsown masonry as well. Thank you.
Commissioners, any final questions?
If I could just add something, so there is the concern with regard to how it will look over time compared with the terracotta. I just go back to my comment before, that the existing terracotta is slip-glazed terracotta. It has a very, very rough texture. We've found that the weathering of the terracotta, the original, you know, continues to have a little bit of surface loss as it weathers. We believe that the substitute material is going to weather very, very closely to the existing slip-glazed terracotta. We don't really, we're not as concerned, although, you know, we always weigh every option and talk about this and discuss it very, very carefully when we recommend alternate materials. And we did have that question, which is why we, you know, with regard to the concern, we're not, you know, our decision is that the performance of the material as far as it is a structure is paramount in its performance with regard to local law eleven. But that decision sort of is more important than the slight concern that it might look different over its lifetime in the building.
Thank you. Any other final questions, Commissioners? Let's move to our discussion then. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're looking at a proposal to replace some terracotta, mostly plain unornamented terracotta with cast stone. And we've seen samples. We've also heard that there are a combination of replacement materials on the facade. And so, including cast stone existing elsewhere in lieu of the terracotta. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Yeah, sure. I, thank you for very complete and detailed presentation. I think that helped us a lot. You really got to the main point of the proposal, which is the material change. I think that this is totally reasonable. I would also note that matching terracotta is also a science in itself and that, that can be harder to match than cast stone. So it's not that that's all just land dump either. The material similarity is preferred, but I think what you proposed is totally appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum.
I agree.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
I agree, very thorough presentation.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, very well done, really. The thought that went to it is impressive.
All right, Vice Chair Bland.
Completely agree, completely, and especially about the presentation, very, very nice job. I want to say in a way I'm going to miss the sidewalk bridge. I often, I often get out of the subway over there on the Times Square and in the rain, it's just a godsend, but I really hope you get rid of it soon.
Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I agree with other Commissioners.
Commissioner.
I agree.
Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion?
Okay.
In the case of LPC twenty-five oh eight seven seven three, fourteen sixty-six Broadway, Knickerbocker Hotel, an individual landmark, Bozart-style hotel building designed by Marvin and Davis with Bruce Price, built in nineteen oh six and altered by Charles Platt in nineteen twenty twenty-one with the Romanesque Revival style annex designed by Philip C. Brown and built in eighteen ninety-four. The application is to replace terracotta with a substitute material. I recommend approval, finding that the replacement of the selected damaged and patched terracotta units is warranted by their deteriorated condition and will help return the building to more uniform appearance. That the building features several replacement materials, including cast stone and fiberglass there. For the replacement of additional terracotta with cast stone will not diminish uniformity of a material at the building. That the terracotta elements will be replaced, consist, to be replaced, consist of plain unornamented units. And the cast stone replacement units will match the historic terracotta units in terms of placement, dimension, color, profile, detail, texture, and finish. That when seen from the street level, the use of cast stone in lieu of terracotta above the double-height base of the building will not be discernible. And that the work will support a long-term preservation of this individual landmark.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Mr. Chapin.
Aye.
Mr. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Chu.
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti.
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. To the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number ten, LPC twenty-five dash zero five seven eight two, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block thirteen eighty, lot forty-five, fifty-four East Sixty-sixth Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a neo-Grec-style rowhouse designed by J. H. Valentine and built in eighteen seventy-seven to seventy-eight. The application is to construct rear yard and rooftop additions, reconstruct the top floor at the rear facade, and raise the roof.
Commissioners, my name is Olivia Taro.
My name is Carolina Escobar.
And we're here to present fifty-four East Sixty-sixth. This is an existing multifamily walk-up that will be converted into a one-family townhouse. Our application is the construction of rear yard and roof addition, reconstruction of the top floor at the rear facade, and the leveling of the roof. The project is located in the heart of the Upper East Side Historic District. The existing brownstone was designed by J. H. Valentine in eighteen seventy-eight. Front facade follows the neo-Grecs' style. The front facade renovation is not included as part of this application. And these are existing photos of the rear facade. This is the existing and proposed block plan. These show a kind of more detailed shot of the new extension above, at the, the new extension of the stairs and elevator deck bed and the new extension above the existing at the rear yard. So I just want to point out here that this line here never really changes. This is the proposed block plan showing the range of extensions that protrude into the rear yards of our block. We are aligning our facades to meet the buildings adjacent to us. So the existing block, existing extension, we are only just adding on top of that. So we're never really crossing that plane. I would like to note here really quickly that there is these two larger and more extensions as you keep going past the, like our property. The aerial shots, again, you can see the extensions that kind of hug us on either side. The next two slides are kind of like a three sixty view from our backyard. So you can kind of see, again, this is like another look at the range of all the extensions in the rear. This three D kind of also explains again that the, where we're adding the mass. So again, we're not extending past into our rear yard. We're just adding on top of the existing extension. And then we are leveling out the roof and we are adding the stairs and elevator bulkhead. Here is kind of a detailed elevation of the existing and proposed. Just going to forward one more because I think this slide is really important. So here, you can see a couple of things happening. One, we're really, we will maintain the existing cornice height. We are proposing to salvage and rebuild the top floor facade. But doing this, we are going to make sure that those openings stay exactly where they are. The cornice is exactly where it is. Even though we are changing the roof height, we are going to angle the roof down to meet the cornice in the back, so that never changes. And I think this also is an important view, so you can see that all of these, we will be maintaining the top floor, which is a very consistent elevation between the forty-eighths to fifty-sixths. So this doesn't change. And then as you go down, there is some, you know, extension changes. But I, in the plane of, you know, where we're working with, there is, you know, a lot of play here. So our extension, we feel, especially mirroring the one next door, is, creates like a continuity. More of the existing facade. And these are the detail shots of the top floor so that we make sure we keep that dog-tooth detail. We reconstruct the existing lintels. There is one slight difference. This is more of a material view of this back facade. This is the existing section. Proposed section, and again, you see here in the proposed section, we're keeping that cornice height. We're dropping the ceiling in the back with the aluminum banton roof to make sure that it meets the existing neighboring facades. There's some more details of the rear facade. There's detail. And I think this one is where I was getting at. This one's kind of the most important. We when we're rebuilding the new facade, we are going to keep exactly the same window opening. So only difference is is that we are going to change that one window in the middle to extend down so that the client is able to access the terrace. This is that detail. This is showing the in the window application that we're going to keep the same heights and match the existing elevation. This is the existing roof photos. And this is the proposed elevator and stairs bulkhead. So there was an option to make the stairs bulkhead match the elevator bulkhead, but we chose to bring it down. We know that the elevator is kind of mandatory because we need overhead height. So that's kind of the highest. And then we brought the stairs down a little bit just so it's not intruding as much. There is still no visibility on the street, but we wanted to bring that down just to make sure that there was would be no issue. The lighter brick color just to, you know, lighten it on the street if not on the street. On the roof, yeah. The rest of the exhaust, we don't have to extend. There's just one behind the stairs bulkhead that will be extended. But as you can see here in the mock-up, they extended the three feet that would have to be, but this is still not visible from this third way. As you can see here, there is one extension, but it's not our for our building. It's for a different building. And then there is going to be a little bit of screening in the back for the mechanical. And this is kind of the logical place for us to place this mechanical because we don't want it to be on the top of the bulkhead because that would, you know, then it could be a problem for visibility. This is this is kind of the only spot we can really fit it while still having some roof access and we're going to make it as small as possible. So yeah, that's the plans and I can if there's anything else we should add. Okay.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions on this one? Okay. Let's see if we have any testimony. Jeremy, are you here to testify in this? So we'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants, participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function, after which we'll promote you to panelist. And we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Zainab Toran.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Zainab Toran speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends Preservation Committee commends the preservation efforts made to maintain this handsome building, especially given the unfortunate loss of many other brownstones constructed in the same row in the late nineteenth century. We acknowledge the architectural significance of this neo-Grec building and its contribution to the historical fabric of the neighborhood. To help with our full assessment, the committee requests a front elevation view as we found the sightline drawings to be confusing. Regarding the rear yard, the committee believes that the proposed aluminum spandrel panels are not keeping with the character of the building. Instead, we strongly recommend brick to improve the composition and scale of the rear facade. Thank you, commissioners.
Anyone else join us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing that I'll know for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval.
Thank you. So the testimony was largely supportive. There was a comment about the aluminum spandrel panels. I don't know if you're welcome to address that if you like.
I think we can, you know, take a look at what brick would look like. I know that the client was very interested in trying to keep continuity with the neighbor, and the neighbor has the window, aluminum window. So I think we can try it, but I know that they were supportive of the aluminum.
If you go back two slides, you can see the the neighbor buildings. We, like the picture on the right, you can see the the bands, the metal bands. So we're trying to replicate that neighbor building.
Okay. All right, thank you, commissioners. Are there any other final questions? Okay, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're going to start. This is a proposal for a forced rear yard addition, not extending to the full height, but also reconstructing that top floor, maintaining the corbelled cornice details and the fenestration, but for one door sill that would be dropped. And then for a stair bulkhead, which and extension of chimneys and mechanical equipment, which are not visible from a public thoroughfare. And just sort of canting the roof to provide a taller ceiling height. And the applicant has shown that the block is varied with other similarly scaled additions as well as larger apartment buildings. And they are modeling their design on one that was previously approved by the commission. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start?
Yes. I'm trying to find why I don't like anything here and I'm coming up short. No, I think this is, I guess, using a model next door that we've approved is a pretty successful strategy. But I think it's a good strategy. And even I was wondering why I had to rebuild that top floor, but I can understand why of all the construction of adding the top two floors that you are, the I guess, third and fourth floor. So it'll be rebuilt exactly as it is now with the dog the dog-tooth detail, which is so prevalent all over the city of New York, including in my own house. I think the rooftop additions are sensitively done, again, very similar to the neighbor and are not visible. So I I have nothing more to say. I think this is appropriate.
Thank you, Commissioner Chapin.
Yes, I agree that it's appropriate. I think it's very similar in terms of fenestration to other applications we have seen approved and also that it fits well in its context and with its neighbors. And the materials are appropriate and I think it's approvable as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Lutti.
I agree with both Commissioner Bland and Commissioner Chapin.
Commissioner Chu.
Appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Agreed.
Appropriate.
And yeah.
Okay, great. So we're all in agreement, Vice Chair.
Good. A matter of fifty-four East Sixty-sixth Street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is an application to construct rear yard and rooftop additions, reconstruct the top floor, the rear facade, and raise the roof. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District. I recommend approval, noting that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed work will not be visible from the public thoroughfare, that the proposed rear yard addition will not rise to the full height of the building of the building and will align with the adjacent additions in terms of height and protection, and therefore will not overwhelm the building or diminish the central green space. That the design and materiality of the rear yard addition, featuring brick cladding and metal window doors and will be in keeping with the materials found at other rear yard additions on the block. And the metal spandrels will reflect the floor levels and reinforce the building's residential scale. That the top floor of the rear facade, including the corbelled brickwork and size and placement of the openings will be rebuilt to match its historic appearance, except for the lowering of one sill to create a door opening. And the raising of the roof will be sloped back from the rear parapet, thereby helping to maintain a harmonious relationship with the neighboring buildings in the row. That the rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear facades, thereby maintaining a sense of the building's original massing. That the materiality of the rooftop addition, featuring brick and stucco cladding, metal window and door assemblies and railings and stone coping will be in keeping with other rooftop additions in this historic district and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the streetscape or the Upper East Side Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, Mark.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti.
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number eleven. LPC twenty-five dash zero eight one seven zero. An application for an advisory report for Brooklyn Block eleven seventeen Lot One, Twenty West Drive and Prospect Park scenic landmark. This is a primarily naturalistic-style park designed by Frederick Law Homestead in Calvert-Vox, eighteen sixty-six to seventy-three. The application is to install wayfinding signage.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Svetlana Ragalina from the Prospect Park Alliance. And today I'm really excited to present to you our wayfinding in the Vale project. This is a joint project collaboration between the Prospect Park Alliance and Two Twelve, our wayfinding consultant, who's also here with us today. This project is located in the Vale in the northeast quadrant of Prospect Park. The Vale is topographically varied and it's difficult to navigate. In the upper Vale, just off Flatbush Avenue, we are installing a composting bathroom, a natural exploration area, and a planted arbor. And down a series of steps from the upper Vale, we find the lower Vale, which includes a man-made pond. That site will also be restored to historic precedent. As a brief reminder, these are renderings for the upper Vale. This design was approved by PDC in twenty twenty-four. And also the lower Vale restoration. The restoration of the Vale will start later this year, and during construction, we hope to fold in this proposed signage system. And as funds become available, we will include the signage in the remainder of the park after further LPC review. So why are we proposing a signage system in the Vale? We have heard from the community that they often get lost and don't know about certain rules, operating hours, or events throughout the park. With a signage system, the Alliance is aiming to advance its mission, making the park a more welcoming destination. Other goals include creating accessible signage that is also flexible and easy to maintain. As you can see on this screen, existing signage in the park spans many decades. It is not uniform or standardized. It's difficult to recognize, to use, and to respect. All of these signs are modern. Historic signs did not have a long lifespan because they were hand-painted and framed in timber. We're proposing a new signage system that is coherent, visually available, and aligned with the furnishing palette of Prospect Park. The system will also use PPAs colors and fonts to reinforce institutional branding and uniformity. And this is the proposed system. It includes maps, directional arrows, stewardship signs, interpretive signs, and placemaking banners. And this is the plan showing the sign locations in the Vale, an eight-acre site. At present, we are proposing twenty-two signs. Starting with the Flatbush Avenue entrance, there will be one freestanding post and panel sign, which will act as a welcoming information hub. This sign will include a map, stewardship, and event information. This two sides of the sign are angled back, as you can see at the top in the plan. This is meant to to be less imposing on the landscape. Graphics for the signage system as a whole will be printed on three different materials. And this is one sign that includes all of these materials. So I'll review it here in brief. All permanent information, such as header and footer panels, will be printed on aluminum. For semi-permanent information, such as map panels, we will print those in full color on high-pressure laminate that's graffiti-resistant. And for more temporary information, such as event and promotional graphics, those will be digitally printed on on Sintra panels, which are lightweight rigid PVC. The reverse of all panels will be printed with the Alliance logo. Moving on to the interior of the Vale, just beyond the Flatbush Avenue entrance, this sign will be installed. It will be installed in the landscape adjacent to a path. And it's a primary stewardship sign. There's only one of these in the Vale. It will encourage the most common park practices, such as dog-leashing, disposing of trash, wildlife and woodland protection, et cetera. Once within the Vale, for certain pathway intersections, we will also need location reminders such as this one. At the top of the post, the directional arrows are designed for far-distance reading and will direct to nearby destinations. The arrows show accessible routes and paths to bathrooms or park exits. And at eye level, more localized maps will be displayed alongside stewardship information. We are proposing four local area maps, two in the upper Vale and two in the lower Vale. And as you can see there, a place where paths diverge. Because this is a wooded area with many hills, it's quite easy to get lost. To ease navigation, we are also proposing to install five posts with only only arrows. These are also found at intersections and reiterate the accessible path and the route to other destinations or bathrooms. I'm only showing four renderings here because one of the sites where this will be installed has not yet been constructed. We're proposing two smaller stewardship signs, one in the upper and one in the lower, again, to promote appropriate behavior. This is a rendering of of one such location in the lower Vale, adjacent to the children's pond. And the location in the upper Vale has not been constructed yet. We're proposing a number of interpretive signage as well, that's intended to engage visitors about rich history, ecology, or built attractions in the park. This information will be presented on HPN panels that are graffiti-resistant, just like all the map panels. Interpretive panels are intended to speak about rich architectural history in the lower Vale pond, or about the ecology of the pond or the upper Vale meadow. Two of these locations have not been constructed yet. In addition to signs, we're proposing two banners, one larger and one smaller. Two of the larger banners will be placed along vehicular paths, one at Flatbush Avenue and one along the Loop Drive, just at the entrance to the Vale. And a smaller-sized sign, there's also two of these, will be placed along pedestrian paths within the Vale. These are meant to remind park patrons that they've arrived in this destination. So in sum, the signage family is meant to be flexible, maintainable, visually accessible, and complement the vernacular of other site elements in Prospect Park. It's meant to be subordinate to the landscape, yet also easily found by park patrons. The sighting of the signs is very intentional and followed multiple walks where we reviewed each location with our wayfinding consultant and Prospect Park Alliance staff. We have tried to space the signs appropriately at points. We have tried to space the signs appropriately at points where routes could diverge and not too frequently. For now, we're limiting installation to just the Vale to let us see how well the signs hold up and if any location changes need to be made. We aim to return to LPC with the whole park mapped for signage in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've got some questions. Commissioner Ginsburg followed by Commissioner Goldblum.
So on page 11, you have your sign on the right and there seems to be a Parks Department sign on the left which is a totally different system. Is that inevitable? I just want to understand why that couldn't be all part of one system.
We can look into that further, but it's my understanding that the park signage that's on the left side of this entrance is is regulation signage. It's meant to let patrons know what activities are completely forbidden and to allow certain police officers to, you know, issue issue tickets and things of that sort. And our stewardship's more about appropriate behavior.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Goldblum.
Have you guys done any of those stewardship signs before? Are there any of those now in the park?
We have temporary stewardship signs. They're fairly small, I'd say about 12 by 18 inches. And they again, you know, are talking about designated barbecue areas and leashing dogs and things of that matter. And they're printed on like a flexible plastic.
Do they work?
I think they work.
So you've noticed that the presence of a sign like this will reduce bad action in its area?
I do. I also, most of those signs also have certain hours. So for the dog walking, there's, you know, certain off-leash hours in certain areas.
Thanks.
All right, other questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony. We'll come back to you. We do have one person who signed up, Jeremy Woodoff.
My name is Jeremy Woodoff and I'm speaking for the Victorian Society, New York. You have a very nice new hearing room, by the way. Congratulations. Two questions we had have been answered by the presentation, but I would remind everyone that the Parks Department standard sign seen on the left of the preceding image was installed without commission review. And there's no reason that the information on that sign couldn't be put into the format of the proposed new signs. However, the proposal we see today appears to have been developed by an expert in wayfinding with little understanding of historic landscapes, especially naturalistic Olmstedian landscapes. Many inappropriate things must be rethought. First, there are too many signs. Every time an object like this is put in the landscape, it chips away at the park's purpose of imitating nature and spiritually removing the visitor from the outside world. That's why the original park signs were rustic or picturesque, to blend with the landscape. The Alliance has unaccountably not included any views of historic signs in their presentation. So we have attached some to our written testimony. Rustic signs could be reproduced today using durable materials. Second is placement. As our pictures show, signs were placed parallel to paths so they would not call attention to themselves. The mock-up images provided today show that the applicant has done exactly the opposite. In Olmsted parks, the visitor is meant to walk along a path drawn towards landscape views of varying types and degrees of mystery. It's absolutely wrong to have landscape vistas disrupted by colorful signs. It's true that for some, destinations are more important than casual wandering. And that's why discreet directional pointers are acceptable. These are already used in the park and everyone has a cellphone capable of providing directions. Third, the large banners on streetlights are inappropriate. These lampposts are necessary modern intrusions. It's wrong to call attention to them with banners. The result is suited to a business improvement district, not a historic park. Our last point concerns the sign at the new Flatbush Avenue entrance. The existing cast iron park's entrance signs were designed in 1992 in a collaboration between LPC and the Alliance. They exist at every major entrance. Despite minimal maintenance, they remain in good condition and will outlast any other signs in the park. The obvious thing to do at this new park entrance is to reproduce the successful design used at every other park entrance. That is the only appropriate design for this location. The commission should require a resubmission rather than saying, "We're only advisory" and sending the proposal off to the design commission. PDC has neither the expertise nor the mandate to review work in scenic landmarks based on standards of historic appropriateness. Effective regulation of scenic landmarks is LPC's job. Thank you. And I can pass around an enlarged view of one of the historic rustic signs.
Thank you. And I'll note that there is no one else in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Our first speaker will be Kaylee Johnson. Ms. Johnson, please unmute yourself and state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Kaylee Johnson. I'll be speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HTC finds the proposed volume and variety of signage inappropriate for an Olmsted and Vox landscape and especially inappropriate for a secluded space like the Vale. Olmsted and Vox landscapes are meant to offer respite from the urban environment. Instead, this volume and variety of signage brings urban cacophony into the Vale. The applicant's presentation shows several different types of signage approved by the LPC every 10 or 20 years. We note the lack of design consistency from one era to the next as well as a tendency to pile multiple versions of signs into the same spaces. We would love to see the applicant and the commission work to find a way to develop a more consistent, modest and long-term signage solution for Prospect Park. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll note for the record that the Brooklyn Borough Board recommends approval. Thank you.
All right, would you like to respond to the comments we've heard? Thank you for all your comments. All right. Okay, so Commissioners, if there are no other questions, we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Luthe, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're going to begin our discussion. And so as presented, there are a number of signs being proposed, including an entrance sign, which is the largest, and then a primary stewardship sign at the entrance to the Vale, four local area identification signs, five signs that are arrows, directional arrows on posts, two smaller stewardship signs, two banners on poles and some interpretive signs. So Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
So one of the things that the development of signage reflects obviously is continuing evolution of understanding of what works with park users. Just as we see playgrounds develop and signage needs to develop to an extent also. And one of the things that we found a lot was basically that the best way to approach people is not negatively by saying, "Don't do this, don't do that, don't do the other thing." As you're coming into the park, this gives people a very negative expression of coming into the park. This is, it's like the library, you have to be quiet. And librarians no longer go around searching people for that reason. So part of the reason for this is a sense of the psychology of signs, which is to approach matters by trying to get cooperation and participation and a positive endeavor in entering the park and the relationship. And I believe that's what's going on with the, you know, stewardship signage. I think it's the right direction, is what I wanted to say. And the original, you know, archetypal park sign says, "Don't do this, don't do that, don't do the other thing." Okay, so. Clearly, yes, it's important in a beautiful, you know, park, Olmsted Park, to be able to experience the environment. So yes, there should not be too many signs and they should not be intrusive in the landscape. But at the same time, signs need to be seen. They need to be noticed because otherwise they don't serve their purpose, obviously. That doesn't mean they should be glaring, but if they recede so much into the background that you don't, you're not observing them or, you know, what you want is someone to come up, look at the sign and then go forward and focus on what they should be there for, the experience of the park. And, you know, I think in general that these signs are achieving that purpose. I do think that overall there should be a comprehensive plan for signage in the park and a hierarchy of signs as they're developing them. And, you know, it would be nice to see that it take them a while to do, obviously, with the size of park. But I think that is important. But I also think that these signs, I think will, I think will work well with modern park users. And I think they need to continue to have a dialogue with the park users about what's working, what's not working, what do they need, you know, a continuing communication with the community about signage. And they may have to change them. I mean, and I don't think this is not, you're not building, you know, a stone, an obelisk or something. You're putting in a sign and it can be changed and it can be taken out. So. And with regard to the issue of overlap with existing park signage, I think it's important that, obviously, there should be a discussion with the Parks Commissioner, new Parks Commissioner eventually, since Sutata here just resigned and as it happens. But to talk about how the need for a comprehensive park signage, which obviously there is one throughout the system. It's a brand and that has always traditionally been the dark green, you know, so that there needs, there needs to be a coordination, obviously, of some sort. But I think that my own reaction in seeing this was that actually I think it generally is going to be an exciting system that will be good for people and will draw them in and give them an appreciation of the various areas of the park. And, you know, I think that my thing would be, as I said, work with the stakeholders about the need for signs and, you know, the number thereof and, you know, adjust that as needed and obviously be very careful about the sighting so as not to impact any important views, which I think, assuming in fact that they have, I'd have, you know, we, we'd have to go out and see them in situ to really judge that, but, you know, a sign this size and a park this size is not going to, you know, normally have an enormous impact on a view of a corridor. And I'm assuming that they are taking some care with this. Since we're seeing all of these together, it looks a little overwhelming. But when you look at the individual picture of a sign, the corner does not seem overwhelming to me. So it's fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthe.
I want to thank the applicant for their their very good presentation. And also Diana, that was a, I really think, a really nice sort of a description of how signage is used and why it's used and how important it is to not only direct, but also how you communicate with the people in the park is very important. And the idea for it to work well with the overall city park signage. So I really think you covered a lot of great and important territory here. I'm a user of this park. So I do want to say that there's been a hodgepodge of signage here of over the years that I have been lived in the neighborhood and it hasn't looked great, hasn't communicated effectively. Sometimes they're duplicate, you know, they're sort of right on top of each other. And I think just this effort, I sort of see this as almost a test case of maybe the applicant said this of something that they could build on for, they did say this, for a greater, a greater direct, you know, park signage, wayfinding, et cetera, general communication standpoint. I think, you know, this park is very used. I think it's more and more, gets more and more used. It started, I think it, during COVID, people went to probably all the parks near them for, as a place of refuge and fresh air and to escape everything that was going on. And I think the need for this, there is a big need for this kind of signage. I can see just, I can see how people do get lost in this park and how it is important for them to know where they are. And not everybody really walks around and tries to figure out on their phone where they are. In fact, it's a little bit annoying because it's better from my perspective to come in contact with a sign and figure it out that way than to be looking on my phone instead of taking in the surroundings or doing whatever I want to do. So. And I do really appreciate the sort of soft way of communicating about rules, which is very important because there are many places in the park that are like not visible. And I think people need to know that no matter where you are, it's important to conduct yourself in a certain way, whether you're by yourself or you have a dog with you, et cetera. So I think this works very, very well. The only thing that was raised that gave me something to think about was does, you know, how prominent does the sign that indicates where you are? If there are these directional signs, how important is the sign that says, "Okay, I'm in the, you're in the Vale"? That I would ask the applicant to just think about a little more because it may be in a way a little redundant because you're communicating effectively about where people are and where they're going. It's in so many ways that you might want to just think about tweaking that or in some places eliminating it as you move forward. Certainly, this will be an interesting test case for you.
And it's just, so it's the two banners that say the Vale.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu.
Yeah. I think that this is a great start. I think it could use some refinement. And I think that ultimately, when I looked at, there are, what we counted about 22 signs in the area and that might be required, but I think- But I think in terms of how to clarify just consistency and less options, less colors, less, less things, I think, would help. I also just thought, you know, as a comment, the wayfinding signs are probably the most minimal, but they do, to me, kind of just reference street signs. And when I go to the park, I kind of feel like I want a different experience of the streetscape. And I'm wondering if the fact that they're so high, I think park signs, when they're lower to human scale, and, you know, we've got fences everywhere, that down there is less sensitive to me than when you start going up higher in the sightlines. And I just wonder, if they were lower, would that feel more distinct to the park as opposed to, "I've got a street sign in the park"?
Right, I actually was recently at the Bronx Zoo, and they have very similar directional signs as you wander through the zoo.
I think some of those you want to see from far away. In other words, when you're in an Olmsted Park, you are winding.
You're on paths, yeah.
And so if you're looking for where you're going, sometimes you do want to, that's, that's why they're more elevated.
If it's high enough, you can see, "Oh, there's a directional sign over there, let's go see what that's..."
Go there and find out where I am.
All right, Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks. I think I find myself not feeling totally comfortable with this. I think it is very professionally done. The information on it is necessary and is very useful in the park, given how it's used today versus how it was used when it opened. But I think that it's also, I have no problem with the information. I have, I have a problem with the branding that it seeks to achieve. By presenting a cohesive, graphically consistent package that is differentiated from other packages that are in the park, it seeks to create a kind of brand identity, and this is, this is what Prospect Park is, similar to what we saw this morning with Northwell. It's kind of a visual language that the graphic designers assemble that is meant to tie the park together and differentiate these two-dimensional printed images from other two-dimensional printed images that one might encounter in the park. I think that while that's a wise corporate decision, I think from an aesthetic perspective, that's less impactful and effective from a landmarks perspective. Because I think what it does, it does clutter the, the environment with multiple parallel overlapping systems. Parks Department, this, old ones, new ones. So I think that, I think it should be simpler. I think that what Jeremy said about, about rustic materials I take to heart as a person raised on the Merritt Parkway in Connecticut, which used to have wood signs with crinkled edges that are now emulated by sterile metal signs with standard green fluorescent paint produced by prisoners in, in Louisiana. It's kind of depressing and sad, and I think that I must get at least two emails a week on synthetic wood products that will outlast humanity. I think that an investigation of more rustic options that convey the required information and have the requisite durability would be appreciated. The vertical posts, for instance, on Parks Department signage till today are made of wood. These are not. I don't think that impacts the messaging in any way. I also think that in looking at the sighting map, there are opportunities for clustering signs when you have two or three in the same location or on opposite sides of the street. Clustering them on a single display might be less visually obtrusive. So I think that while the information is necessary, I think that the aesthetics and the location should be studied further to make it as integrated as possible and as consistent as possible with other visual materials that one encounters in the park.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So, following up, I think as Commissioner Goldblum noted, the signs are largely needed, and I get that. And the, having a uniform system makes sense. Hopefully, there is enough flexibility as you test out this signage before you develop a master plan for the entire park, that you see what works, what doesn't. And where, as Commissioner Goldblum mentioned, it is possible to combine signs or posts or minimize them, it would be good. But in general, I can support this, and I just hope you look at this as not the end, but the beginning of a process.
All right, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, to add on to that, I think that, you know, when you come to a fork in the road on the trail or any parkland, just, it is necessary. Yes, we take it exactly. And also, I think all the comments were thoughtful today. I think, you know, the issue, what Diana pointed out, and I'm thinking of, you know, what we would normally find with this type of signs, the tagging. People vandalize it, people write on it, and then pretty soon you had to make it. And having been the Guinea pig for the New York City DOT wayfinding system, and I'm looking at every year how many college students get lost in hiking trails, and I think that in other countries. I think, yeah, I encourage the Parks Department and everyone else to look at, you know, further systems, how we can adapt to a better, you know, a better system to really look at overall. I do, I have no problem with the lighter color, in the sense that our eyes are naturally drawn to a lighter color, so the darker green, with a lack of contrast with the traditional Parks Department signs are, to me, less visible. So the natural tendency is always to draw onto the lighter area, so. And I, the height question is also a good one, because, you know, we're having people trying to attract people from Brooklyn Bridge to go to Chinatown, and the height of the sign is too high, they don't notice it. If it's in front of you, if it's too dark, they don't notice it either. So there's a lot of nuances, so I hope that, you know, continuing exploration and coming at a solution.
Vice Chair Bland?
Listening to this, it seems like it's a marvelous philosophical conundrum. At least, I'm facing a philosophical conundrum. On one hand, listening to such a comprehensive presentation by, "Affirm my mightily respect to 12," consistency, et cetera, et cetera. You know, and then we hear in testimony from Jeremy Woodoff about, "Yes, but we need fewer signs, and we need them to be rustic, et cetera, et cetera." So I can see both sides of that so easily. I mean, maybe I'm really off base, but, you know, I think of the signage in the, in the National Park system. And although I have a vague notion of it as opposed to a specific actual notion of it, it seems to me as if that's the rusticated, rustic system, which was all, you know, really came from, as the architecture itself came from, the Adirondacks before the National Park system existed at all. And then I'm thinking, well, that's real nature, that's real nature. The National Parks, the Adirondacks, this isn't real nature. It's really an artifice, a wonderful, you know. To me, the most wonderful piece of artwork that our city has are these two, let's say, and many others, but these two incredible parks, one in Manhattan and one in Brooklyn. And they are using natural materials, but they were manufactured. So then I'm convincing myself in some backward way that maybe they don't, the signage, you know, and if you really, if you really need to get into the woods, well, then take a bus and go up to the Adirondacks or something. When we're in the city, it's a different kind of experience going into the parks. It's really kind of a different thing, and sure you want to leave your worldly problems behind, at least for an hour, and take a walk in the park. Anyway, I'm convincing myself that this, that this system is probably appropriate. You know. AV system in the old place. Like, I'm, I'm, I am thinking that what's being presented here could have a positive, what do we call it, positive report. My only problem with it is perhaps it's all, it's had too bright. If it could just be slightly less bright, the signage itself. And of course, if we can have fewer signs, that's better than more signs. But I think this is probably in the right direction, but I did have to convince myself through a circuitous line to get there.
Okay, so I think, you know, there's been a lot of thought put into this, so thank you all, Commissioners, for that. And, you know, this is, as was pointed out, this is an advisory report, so we will send to the Public Design Commission a, in this case, we'll do a positive report, but we will include some of the comments that have been made, having to do with the colors, the location placement, and materials that have been raised by all of you. And we'll send that on. I do want to note that the Public Design Commission reads our advisory reports. We've gone back and studied the last advisory reports over the last 20 years. They have, in many cases, it's usually the Parks Department, they've made changes before going to the Design Commission or through the Design Commission that reflect our comments. So the process works. The Public Design Commission always references our advisory reports in their hearings. So that's what we'll do. We will go ahead and do a positive report, but then we will also incorporate all of the other suggestions that we've heard today. Sorry, Diana.
Yeah, okay. No, it's fine, just. In the matter of an advisory report, Borough Brooklyn, LPC 25-08170, 20 West Drive, Prospect Park Scenic Line Mark, a primarily naturalistic style park designed by Frederick Law Olmsted and Calvert-Vox in 1866 to 73. Application is to install wayfinding signage. I recommend that a favorable report be issued, finding that the installation of the proposed signage will not damage or eliminate any significant historic architectural or landscape features, that the signage will contain site-specific and relevant safety, directional, and educational information, enhancing park users' experiences, that the proposed signs are simply and uniformly designed and consistent with typical wayfiring, wayfinding signage in terms of placement, type, and size, thereby helping to provide a coherent informational system without drawing undue attention to the signs, that the specific spacing, placement, and sign of the sign, size of the signs will correspond to the site features and circulation within this portion of the park, that the materials and color palette of the signage, including black metal posts and a predominance of green backing on the sign panels, will harmonize with the landscape and will be typical and in keeping with the aspects of other signs within the park, that the yellow signs will be limited to important rules and safety information, and that none of the work will obstruct views of prominent vistas or diminish the historic, naturalistic character of the park.
Thank you, and we will add comments related to materiality, location, and colors as has been discussed today. Vice Chair Bland, do you second that motion?
Second.
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, so thank you very much. That, we're going to do two housekeeping items and then conclude the day.
Right, and we are going to read the last two items into the record. That's Public Hearing Item Number 11, LPC 25-0, I'm sorry, Public Hearing Item Number 12, LPC 25-05785, 300 Lafayette Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District, and Public Hearing Item 13, LPC 25-08411, 956 Park Place in the Crown Heights North Historic District 2. We'll read those into the record today to be presented at a future public hearing date.
Thank you, and that concludes our public hearing today, and we will see everybody next Tuesday. Thank you.